Okay.
I think I can leave this picture.
Yep, I think so. This is the Dayton Historical Commission, our regular monthly. Team here at Town Hall and Zoom. The listing of the matters of those recently anticipated by the Chair was made in discuss at the maybe not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So the meeting called to order. Six oh five. I'm Pat Beal, the Chairperson. My introductions. Go ahead.
Ronald Stedman.
Adam.
Swobodran.
Irene Alley.
Kenny Pacheco.
Let's rise for the political.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the minutes, we have the minute of January tenth. I do have. Two things. The motion under. Number five for the CP down at the bottom where it says motions on the second page. Motion to the renovation plans and CP funding should agree wanting to submit a letter of support for the renovation plans and CP. See funding for Smith Memorial Hall. That's the end. And then I saw. And then. Down under the budget. Just, I don't know, a little clarity because we talked. Equipment and repairs we paid for is the repair of our dislading in Old Town Hall. The only thing we've ever had professional technical would cover anything like we were going to do, going to the GSI mapping in FY twenty four, going to conferences, workshops. Communications and the mailings, we have to do other supplies and everything else we do. Office supplies. And then press out four hours, historical signs having paid for Boston Post came. Time platinum for that book. That's what I said. Did anyone else see anything that they needed to amend? Those. That good? Okay.
It's just feeling. It's like, you know, just like three hours.
I know. Motion to waive the reading of the January tenth, twenty twenty three minutes and accept as amended. Your second, second. All in favor? Aye.
Stop.
Okay. Now the minutes of February fourteen. Just one little correction. On. Page two. It was Irene Alley that was going to be dropped directly to be around the historic district. Not that. Nothing but fine. Were there any other amendments or changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty three minutes and accept as submitted. Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's done. So our budget. Last time I think I was still on vacation mode because I totally blanked out the bill for the ball printing for our warm bees. That was a hundred and fifty five dollars, which has been processed. And we're still the eighteen ninety nine for the thumb drives through Amazon has been processed and will show up on the April. No, on the March ledger. So our balance right now is one thousand four hundred and six dollars and ninety cents. That we put aside six hundred for in June for when we do the GIS mapping for the Red Dayton project. And for the FY twenty four budget, we don't have a date yet for meeting with the Finance Committee. Are they doing those?
We're gonna start next Tuesday.
Starting next Tuesday.
Yeah.
They've got some schedule.
I know I was set the schedule, but I don't know if everybody else, but I would assume. That people will know.
I'm getting, they don't want to talk to me?
I'm sure they do.
I'll follow along. Okay. I heard they want to talk. And we're all welcome to go and talk with them too. Anyone have anything else under the budget? Unfinished business, the James Briggs Garden sign. Well, BP has responded and I think I forwarded everyone the email. I was quite surprised that they had started the project. But okay, they were the only ones that donated interest.
I surprised them.
So. It'll be wood. And we'll stain it dark. It's cost estimate is ninety five dollars plus the purchase of two six by six by eight foot pressure treated lumber for the base. So I checked it loads and those run about sixty three dollars or so, sixty four, uh, for the tool, it would be sixty four dollars. So thirty one, thirty two dollars each. So I put that in. The graphic department will do the infographic thing. And actually the, he sent a picture. Since we're having trouble with the Zoom and the screen sharing, let's turn my computer and hopefully you guys can see that. Yes. That's what it's gonna look like.
Very similar to what we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, the picture will be black and white. Yeah. It's just a reflection. Then the wood will be stained dark.
That's cool.
So. I'm like, okay. And when he's talked about, his name's Kevin Clifford, I mean, we talked about the pressure treated boards for the base, he said the installers will need those. So my question back to him was, were they going to install it or did we have to attempt to do it? But he hasn't gotten back to me yet. Um. Yeah, exactly. So I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking, you know? Yeah. And I will also share this with Jen. Montara. And Petri here.
Tyler.
Tommy, yeah. And they forwarded to the Agricultural Commission. It looks like we should be able to hit spring or close to.
To go back to this historical mission, your meeting with the PINCOM or something like that. March twenty eighth, eight fifteen.
March twenty eighth. Tuesday.
Yeah, well, we have three meetings with the PINCOM starting next Tuesday, Thursday, and by on Tuesday. Eight fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Almost at the end.
Maybe they'll be more, not give me extra, give us extra money. Oh, I think they do in the morning, seriously.
And. It's not like six thirty. That's one of. Nine fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, you'll get a phone call.
Yeah.
So you know.
But we'll be ready.
Yeah. And the town is at eight thirty.
What?
She probably won't be there.
No.
She, yeah, the budget is difficult. So to script.
All right. So with the James Briggs Garden sign. I think we should, you know, proceed with them. They were the only ones that were reasonable and answered our call. They just skipped a few steps, like getting approval before. Let's say we got what we wanted, the terraced one a bay, and it's what we all look at.
He's plenty in town.
Yeah. So I was looking at. Our motion to have them complete the James Briggs Garden sign with the cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars. Just in case there's something else that comes up that we don't know. Of course, if it stays with the ninety five plus the purchase of the sixty four, it's like hundred and fifty nine dollars. But I didn't know if they needed something for the graphic part of it yet. You know, or because that's just the woods, so. That sounds. Sounds reasonable. All right. So I'll begin a motion to have our supplement from high school complete the James Briggs Garden sign with the cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars.
So.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So that project has been moving along.
Oh, it gives the students over there pride that they.
They've been crazy, yes, yeah. Yeah.
Good skin, go by next time.
Yeah.
A lot of historical towns they have on the signs.
Yeah. And now that I have a contact, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next is the. Matt Crane House Memorial. So I met him last year with Derek Costa. That's his name. Right. Superintendent over at the Bristol Aggie School about the Matt Crane House Memorial. He's very interested in it. And he wants to work with us to make it a meaningful presentation, not only to the students, but to others who visit, who would possibly see this, this display. When we originally talked to. This, the former superintendent, he was going to be, you know, against student commons building. You know, something up on the wall. We were, you know, going to send her some pictures and she was going to have the architects do it. So I told him that story and he says to me, well, the architects are now gone because everything is finished. So we know that that's, you know, not that, but I have. He had a lot of questions about Matt Crane, about the house, its relationship to Bristol Aggie. Who was Nate Crane, you know, his family? Were they all connected to the, the school when it would be, it was the independent agricultural school? That was first there. Did he know his neighbors and standard, you know, just all kinds of things? So. You know, in a conversation, it was like. He'd like to see a timeline of Matt Crane and, you know, the house, who the house owners were, their contribution to, you know, whatever was going on at the house. So he wants it to bridge from like the community to the school to Nat Crane, which I think is much more meaningful than just something stuck up on a wall and hung out there. And then Raph, I had shared an email from way back when.
Three years ago.
Three years ago from another, a guy from.
Arlington.
From. Yeah, he talked about storyboards. Which are, you know, on a wall, perhaps, you know, tell the story along a wall, you know, if you tell. Nate Crane, you can tell the house. So. I think I'm much more excited about it in this form than. Though, of course, it's a little more work than going and just saying we have these architects, we're going to put them up. Um. So he said, you know, do some of our, our research, our homework. We can sit and meet with them again in May, June. He has graduation at the end of May, so it might have to be mid May or into June after graduation. I did look at the Historical Society today. I was there. And there was a folder on the house, so we do have some information that we can take a look at. I do know that it actually, it was from Elaine Varley's tape that I thought I had it on and I was listening. All of a sudden I hear the Nate, that Matt Crane's house and talks about the swoop that it was like, oh, the swoop that, yeah, the swoops out. That he sailed on, that was the name of his ship. And I was like, oh, my gosh, that's one I think I needed.
Need to do is talk to Merna. Very proud of them.
In Harrison's house, Matt Crane's.
That crane's.
Oh, he did, yeah.
She's. Oh.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, I know, we checked for her anyways, that's the source. I just was, you know, at the society, I felt you saw me check and see was there, so. So we need to do some research. I don't know, is anyone interested in doing deed research? I liked genealogy, the family history part of it better. I'm not gonna do it all. What, the deeds?
Well, not the house.
The house is on that, yeah, yeah. It's not a whole lot of. It's about an updated one now. Um.
That's right. Can they hear your voice if you don't have the microphone?
That's not any connected.
It's not connected.
Right now.
Get it, and then you see us. We're about. Maybe one of those microphones.
Oh, one of those microphones. I knew.
It was. I was just. I got, that's correct.
Ulterior motive.
Yes.
We may have to start from the beginning though.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Get your.
I'll write it out for you. What do you, you want all the tech to work all at once? I was, I was more concerned about the.
Esp transparency, right?
I was just more concerned about the visual tonight than the auditory.
I thought it knew to. Point out or whatever.
Pick up some and we could have been close enough. Um. Yeah, it's when you have people out in the audience and they're talking that you really can't, it doesn't pick up well. But those owl things that are like this, they're an owl. And it turns as the person is talking, it turns to it. They're really cool.
Yeah, it just turned.
Yeah, it just turned, but it's better. It picks them up better than that, so. Anyway.
It's just visual.
Yeah, yeah. Um. All right, so we have, you know, some jobs that need to be done. I don't know if people are, what people are interested in working on.
You say deed research. What do you have to go up to the Taunton Registry of Deeds?
You can do some of it online through the Bristol County. Registry.
Actually, some of the information in that crime house is available on the, was it twenty nineteen calendar? And Merna.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Sure, so.
Again, I guess we'll start.
Yeah, I think I.
Was that house very well.
But it's not only, and then it's going to be a little bit of research of the people that were there too, which is.
Who lived there.
Who lived there, yeah. So we can work on it. We have. Some time, I'll make some copies of stuff and.
Mention, Merna mentioned that Willam Harrison actually met with that conference at Yalta in Russia.
Oh, really?
Just.
I know, that's interesting. Okay.
Five miles.
Get the microphone.
Yeah, well, the. The seizure was if your phone goes off, you gotta run into the bathroom.
Pick up.
Yeah, yeah, I won't pick up ours, but okay. Um, I don't know, is anyone interested in trying some research on some stuff?
I guess I'll do it.
You'll put it, you're gonna need stuff?
Sure.
All right.
On that. Bike trail thing, was that, it was a. A appendix that did awful lot of wonderful information on.
The what?
And I wonder if that, the whole. Somebody did a super job the whole length of it.
Wow.
And when you mentioned deed research, you said that was, all that stuff was all in there.
Oh, on that document that we got from the Trails Committee from Al?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a lot of information.
A lot of, I was hoping we wouldn't lose that because that saves.
No, I, I kind of refer to that for different things, yeah.
I don't know if Crane House would have fit as close.
I know, I don't know, think it was mentioned.
Right.
It is.
But that is one property in between the train track and them.
But.
I don't think.
Back then, they were, the whole town was owned by three people.
No, I'll, I'll take a look, or if you want, still have it.
If I could find it.
Yeah, okay.
I think I.
I put all that stuff in here.
Okay, that's a start. So Irene, the deed research rap is going to start, but you can go online to the Taunton Registry of Deeds. And you go to. Research, I think it said. And you can research by street address or book and page. Book and page actually pops up a lot more.
Okay. But you would have to have.
Yeah, usually.
Name first though to start.
Usually, you know, like, I could show you sometime. I go in and I'll put like the street address and see what shows up. Then I usually know a name and then get a book and a page to start. Start off of. I can show you sometime.
Yeah, okay.
Another rabbit hole to go down.
I need rabbit holes.
All right, twenty one twenty Water Street. I put this on the agenda just so it stays on our radar. And I did talk with the building inspector and everything is status quo. It's just boarded up. Nothing else has been done on that yet.
That twenty one twenty one.
Twenty one twenty Water Street. It's the house, yeah, yeah.
Boarder of.
Yeah. So.
So the bank is still the holder of the property then?
Yeah. Yep. Under preservation planning. Our survey update for phase two, Stacy is continuing with it. She's preparing the draft inventory forms. The end of this phase is April fourteenth. And on phase two will begin. The review of all the forms and the discussion back and forth so that that part of it, our review with Stacy would be completed by May twelve. And then the phase three is scheduled to be completed by June ninth. And that's the final production of the forms and the map and the CD again, like we had last time. So these dates are coming faster than we thought. You know, than I thought, because it's already the middle of March. So that's where we are on that. Just a reminder that our. My presentation for the historic buildings in Dayton is with the libraries on March twenty third at six thirty here. Raph, are you going to talk about your house with your historical marker? Huh?
Best house I like. I think.
Compared to what it looked like.
Yeah.
You just brief, just like two minutes, you just brief. Are you, Ken, you gonna? Talk about your house?
We're gonna skip the PINCOM or something.
Oh, that's on the twenty third? On the Thursday?
Yeah, we, the PINCOM is.
Oh, on the Thursday, are they meeting here?
So I was just going to check to see if they're meeting.
Oh, they could have bumped us out.
I would hope not. If they can be at prime time, they may have a bigger problem.
Yeah.
I'm sure this tells us whether he's.
I can check too. Oh, but I think all of you people should be.
Prime time.
At prime time, okay.
Also, it's not here, it's at prime.
No, our meeting is here. The Historic Buildings Program is here.
Okay.
Hey. Pat, do you want to say anything about your houses? Nothing fancy, not, you know?
I think Chris will do our house and she's doing with Slow Davis too.
Yeah, that, yeah, she said she's doing Slow Davis. Your house doesn't have a marker yet, but it's got significant history. Yeah, and Joanne.
Does it have to have a marker?
No. Because it's a candidate, but it's got significant history, so. Okay. Historical markers. Raph, are you, we're going to do a little research on the two on Chase Street? And you said it was kind of a.
Yeah, I didn't see a lot of information. On that, it was, it's basically a survey written, but that, which was actually written by five years ago. But I didn't see it. I didn't see any specific information for each specific house, one fifty, one fifty eight. And I went to the Bristol Registry of Deeds, see if there was a relationship about ownership and deeds. So. Only the street address, I didn't see any specific information. So I know Mr. Woods, but I didn't see his name.
Oh, really?
What we're looking, you can go in the book, everything's on your own, no one helps you there. So we go away and do the grand tours and. Follow it back that way.
So you have, have you read the actual, this whole?
No, in, in the registries.
Yeah.
There's a section of books for the grand tours and the grand.
So when the street address. Yeah, address. It was, okay.
Yeah, because I saw some stuff. I actually found. I think it was one fifty eight. In the red, I can, I can forward that to you, the link for it. And I still have to confirm about the historical markers for the town buildings. I did mention it to both the town administrator and the building inspector. But they can get back to me. And with budget stuff right now, I know Mike's like out straight, so. I won't, we'll keep on it, we'll get it done.
Probably have to find another.
He's not doing signs at all?
Yes, we responded. When the last time I responded, it was over a month, but he said it wasn't.
Yeah.
On his business page. Some, so, space of page, I think, four years. So I didn't. Do this time.
Do you want to reach out to him and ask him? Yeah. Yeah. Because. Yeah. Because that could possibly change our pricing and everything. I like our signs, yeah. What was it, Westport that had beautiful signs too? Yeah. Well, that's too bad if he's not doing that.
Is that going to change how you go further in the future with the signs or? Or was it just for the, the town buildings was the one we were looking at?
No, he did all of it for.
Oh, so.
All, all of our houses so far, yeah, yeah. So, you know, to keep them consistent, you know, consistent appearance to them, you want the ball to be the same. So when someone looks at it and sees it, they know that's an historic building. So. All right, if you would follow up on that, that would be great. Anything else on historical markers? And next is new business, Discuss Review Act on the annual report that's due on April third. So I emailed a draft. Everyone, anyone have any? Input?
Is that for the town meeting?
That's for the.
Town report.
The town report that's handed out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Fun stage.
Yeah.
I thought it was good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Going to advise us to add.
Yeah, I'll just take his, yeah.
But isn't that from this year?
Yeah, now, this is the last year.
It's for our last year, but we're submitting it now, so.
Now, I. It says for the, yeah, your retirement book for the year twenty twenty.
All right, yeah.
That would not. That would not.
Okay.
Because it's always like the year of previous.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the annual report for the town of Dayton.
So move.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay. And also I'll submit that into Leanne. Hey, um, Pat had asked for the segregated schoolhouse to be put on the agenda. So. First, before we begin that.
They only had a few questions.
Oh. This, I realized that um, Irene and Ron didn't know that we made a proposed purpose of statement for the segregated schoolhouse last April, so I made copies for everybody. So that's our proposed statement of purpose for the schoolhouse. And we do have in for F Y twenty-five. Uh, um. Capital out, capital outlay request for architectural plans and designs for um, the segregated schoolhouse. But in the meantime, the schoolhouse is still there. So Pat shared. Would like to. Fix up the sign. See that? You see?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
The sign uh, needs to be painted and I agree it does. That's one sign.
No, it's not just paint. I stopped there on Sunday.
You stopped.
It's rotted.
It's rotted.
So do we have any idea, isn't there another sign similar in design somewhere in town? To that, you know, the white, the swirlies on top and. Paint that.
I think, I think Kathy Yelled designed it and.
Really?
I, that's what I think.
I thought we saw another one in town. I just can't picture where and so.
It's a white one. It's that, but I think the, the letters are blocked. They're not scripted, but it's similar.
Does it have fancy curvy things on top?
Ask me a hard question. It may, you know.
Well, it, the school is located on one thirty-eight. And after I spoke about the condition, the present condition of the school, someone stopped me and they said, have you seen that one room schoolhouse? And I said, oh, it's funny you mentioned that, because I just was talking about. Um, but not sign, it just, even if they just took a pretor water and cleaned the mold off, it's on one. It gets a lot of visibility. That sign looks horrible and it's all rotted. And that's what we show people when they drive by, because you don't live in Dayton. That's what we show them. The doors, the front doors of the schoolhouse need to be painted. Um. Unfortunately, I, I, there's nobody to blame. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but Dayton's town buildings, we don't tend to keep them up. And then they fall into disrepair and then things are too far gone and that's too late.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the pictures that she has, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just.
All right, so.
Can we have a, like a temporary fix, maybe just repaint? Oh, works well.
The board.
So you would need to redo the sign.
Took a knife, you could go right through.
BP, but don't do it. Don't put a knife through it. The building commissioner, he's charged of all the.
Right.
So he would be the person to speak to about that.
All right, so.
Highway department can.
Let me talk with, with Jim. Are we willing to paint if we need to?
If it was just paint, I would paint it.
Okay. Okay, I will talk with Jim. Because we were gonna, Raph, you and I were.
I'm still very visible from.
Yeah.
The street.
Yeah.
Does the Aggie School, School get involved like BP does?
No, they don't have.
They don't have that department.
I was almost gonna volunteer somebody from at home, but I don't know.
They had it in nineteen.
No, I mean, Jeff has done signs before.
Um.
Tell him to stop in and see him, to ask him what he thinks. I was hoping it just was paint peeling off.
But yeah.
Paint off and paint.
Now, what about where the actual lettering of the schoolhouse, is that rotten?
Two thirty, there's a big piece of rot over there and on the top where the fancy scrolls are, that's rot.
Yeah, I could tell.
Sign is not rot.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see it pretty good in that, in that picture, the whole top.
All right, so.
He could temper, you know, if I asked him, I don't know.
We also have to find, find out town property, you know, um.
Yeah, the highway department, the union.
Right, right, right. So let's talk with Jim Aggar. And Tom Perry will probably be in on the conversation. And then we'll go from there.
How was the responsibility for that building split up? I get very confused then. Is that? Does the historical commission own that building?
No, the town owns the building.
Just like any other town-owned building?
Mm-hmm.
So we're more of an influence to getting them to do something about their building? Okay.
Our building, yeah. It's our building. Because it belongs to all of us.
There's a lot of those.
So, all right.
I also have suggested to you, if you wanted to get a key and just.
That's right.
Make a day out of it. I'm sure you haven't been inside that in some time.
I've never been in it.
Good, so wouldn't you enjoy a quick visit? Just so you could see, when we talk about going forward.
Yeah.
What are we talking about? What does it look like inside? And um, at the time, I was thinking of Bill, but I mean, just to have a day, if we could all go there. Just to see what it looks like, see what you're outside. You're not gonna stay long.
Well, it's like painting size, so don't eat any of the paint.
So, do you wanna pick a date or? Um, I can look at my calendar and put out a few dates.
Yeah.
And I don't know, are you still doing part-time work, subwork?
Yeah, but it's hit or miss. Uh, I got asked today to finish the end of the year on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But, you know, I told her I would look at my calendar.
Okay.
You know.
Because certainly we can go over and take a look at it, you know, yeah.
Is this statement of purpose sort of a spin-off of the old thing?
Yeah, we've talked to the people at um, Horn, Horn Vine, yes.
Kind of reminds me of the description.
Yeah. All right, I will.
Yeah, if you wanna throw some dates there, I can let you know.
Because if it's um, the majority of us, I'd have to post it as a meeting, if it's four or more. Three or, yeah.
It's four or more.
Which I can do. That's not a problem. All right. Anything else on the schoolhouse? Okay. Rapha, you had talked about the historical commission is turning fifty. Oh, to be so young.
Do they do anything special when it turns forty, thirty, twenty?
I don't know.
You'd say no, no?
No.
Seven.
Yeah. I was thinking about it. I, I was thinking of anything. We should at least have a write-up or a discussion or something about that first founding heritage committee, which the historical commission came off of, because you're talking about people like Charlie Harris, Helen Lane, Elaine Varley. Um, Helen Brown involved in it?
Probably.
You know, they were very, very active in getting the, the history of this town documented and known and getting this commission started. So if anything, just uh, a gathering of information about them to, I don't know what to do with it, but I think some recognition should be given.
So was it a founding heritage committee?
It was originally called a heritage co- commission or heritage committee. And then, was it nineteen seventy-three the state statutes came in?
What month, what date exactly? Did he start?
No, but we could find that out, I'm sure.
I didn't think this commission was that old. I was surprised.
No, you didn't realize how old you were.
Uh, yeah, that too.
Helen Lane was very act, yes, she started it.
And because it was something in a biography about her.
Yes.
That is one of her credits.
And she started it and it was because the state made us, had the statute that started. Or maybe they were started before the state law came in.
Because when would she have been, I know she was around for a long time, but.
Yeah, yeah.
When she had been active?
In the sixties and early seventies at least.
Yeah, she was active in the society in sixty-two.
Yeah, she was.
Sixty-eight, when they purchased the building. She was active in all of that, so.
But I think she started the heritage.
I think you're right. So we'll find out. Would you check your resources on, on that?
I think I got it from the historical society. I think it was a biography of her, because where else would I have read that?
Yeah.
I think it's something at your historical society.
Okay.
That talked about her as a, just as, as an aside. I think it's nice to do something for the fifty years. So in celebration of that, is Jack Torres still living?
Yes, he's in trailer.
Is he? Because nobody's seen him for a while. That's why I'm asking.
He was, it's fall, this fall, I saw him out.
His trailer on one thirty-eight.
Oh, with the.
No, it's a perpetual yard sale. Please, it's not a joke.
That's.
Anyway, oh, yeah.
Yes, he did.
He wrote some poems about.
Oh, tons.
See, that's why I asked.
Tons.
Because you have to ask them, you know?
Because the last time I saw him was in the fall. He was outside, falling asleep in his yard sale.
But nobody's seen him for a while. I used to see him at Donald's on a Sunday. He would come in with the girlfriend. I haven't seen him in months.
So if there's, I know that I've seen some of his poetry at the society.
Okay, and I'm sure there's a Dayton poem, and wouldn't it be nice? Because, and especially if he's still living, you know, to honor. How many people write poems about Dayton? Too many.
No, all right.
I'm thinking of it.
And along the same line, I have a.
Good.
I have a picture of the um, Unitarian Church.
Yeah.
Elm Street that someone painted. It's not, paint my number, it's not a picture. It's a real painting of that church. So I'm, you're not gonna have a display of stuff somewhere, but wouldn't that look neat there?
Right.
Because how many people paint the church? It's a beautiful picture, framed. I have it hanging up.
Where did you get?
The Red House.
Everything was in the Red House, so. All right, so we can work on that because we have.
It's nice, yeah.
Are there any minutes for?
Our minutes in the file cabinet over at um, town hall and of course, um, Mark Pachico, the town clerk, would have all of the minutes that.
Might be something in those original.
Should, there should be from the very beginning, because it's a.
Yeah, whether they're posted or not, I don't think so.
No, but he has a, he should, they should be on file. Usually you file them. You just put them in file, in file and.
I mean.
Now I'm sure it's electronically.
Find some interesting things.
Yeah, and there are minutes, notebooks of minutes over um, in our cabinet at town hall too.
On the annual reports as well.
Yeah.
So if we're fifty years old, what was the year?
Seventy-three.
Fifty, so what's the year?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
So how about if I look in the seventy-three town book?
Okay.
Of which I have. And see if there's some mention there about.
Okay, okay. And I have Elaine Varley's The Red Book. Um, that's the add-on to Helen Lane's. Okay. And we'll gather the information and bring it forward next time. And think about how we can do it. I was thinking maybe if we could do, we got two shelves in there we could use too, no one shelf.
I'm only in my painting, but I don't wanna.
Lose it.
Definitely, you know?
Yeah.
Doing, doing something for a day or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's really, really beautiful.
I'm sure. It's a beautiful church and anyone that can paint can do a nice job with it. So, okay. We'll um, put that back on the agenda for next month.
Take a picture, be a picture. I think this picture is.
Okay.
All right, moving on, um, library building com- uh, report. Uh, the, the library building committee met with the CPC for a walk through uh, two oh seven Main Street with the CPC members and representatives from Granite City Partners on March first, twenty twenty-three. And then yesterday, on March thirteenth, CPC voted to approve the application for funding of the two oh seven Main Street project for three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So. It's moving along.
We go from there, town hall.
Town meeting, yeah. The CPC will.
June fifth.
Um. CPC will write though, uh, warren article for that. So for June fifth.
Do we keep our fingers crossed that it passes?
No, we go to the meeting and vote.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know.
Yeah. Right, um, no CPC report. Oh, that's my phone going crazy. Um, tonight. We had an email from Marina, the town historian regarding historic homes for sale. And we have the Hathaway House on Water Street. I don't even know, I don't think that's still on the market, but um, one on Elm Street and two on Elm Street now. And the third, uh, three of them are on Elm Street. So her question is that the Dayton Historical Commission had a discussion and some action on these homes, that there is some involvement. Perhaps a paper about each house and its history for the realtors to provide their perspectives as a way to provide some history, reach back for potential buyers. So. I did look through the files and like, you gotta love Elaine Varley. Because she at one time was sending letters out in two thousand two. She was sending it from the Historical Commission to express her thanks for purchasing an older home. Whether you're gonna restore it or just keep it up, we are happy about it, she says. Um. So she enclosed some information about, about the homes. And then she invites them to join the Dayton Historical Society, tells them when the Historical Society was meeting and what time. And she signs it, Elaine Varley, Chairman of the Dayton His- Historical Commission and the Curator of the Dayton Historical Society. And in case of bad weather, she gave her telephone number to call if they. In case the Historical Society was canceled and not there. So, um. At one point in time, there was an attempt for, you know, to reach out to the prospective homeowners. I know when um, the Water Street property came up for sale, I did talk with the realtor and they were appreciative of the information that I was able to provide. Because that, that particular house, they knew was in a, a national historic district. So. Having said all that, um, does anyone have any input or ideas, thoughts?
Is Marina asking the commission to do?
Marina is asking the commission to do, um, is to reach out to the realtors to provide some history for the, the houses. And that can be as, as simple as um, sending them, you know, a copy of the, the form Bs, because I think all of these houses have form Bs on the inventory done. You know, for information. Is that something we wanna make an endeavor on and?
The nicest, most efficient way of getting that, what she's. It's the nicest, most efficient way of getting that, what she's asking for.
Do we think it's a worthwhile effort to do?
I don't see why not. The only thing I don't know is, how do you know when it's for sale?
That.
Other than.
Word of mouth and, you know, you have to be checking the, the listings.
Now, does she know exactly that, say, Mary Bennett's house is up for sale?
It is.
It is, yeah. But is there a sign on?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
Sounds like she's a good source then, huh? On the pipeline.
Or is it more, more important to give the information to the new homeowner?
When they, once they've bought the house.
Say, boring.
Kinda could be a follow-up.
I just thought a letter from the town historian might carry more weight. A letter from the historical commission, which we have been powerless to do anything to save all homes. I mean, we're powerless.
Hmm.
It, it's a fact and, and Myrna certainly was a member of this commission for several years. So perhaps, you only have one town historian, perhaps a letter from the town historian would carry more clout. Um, people are gonna do with their money what they wanna do with it. And they're buying an old home, is it because they can afford it? Is it rundown and it's affordable to them? Or do they really have an interest in history? We have no idea what people are doing.
Or is it a ulterior motive to knock it down and buy a new house?
We have no idea. It's their money. We can't control other people's money.
Chances are, whether it's.
Not really.
But again, so, or maybe a letter from Myrna might mean something to them, that the town historian took time to say that your home is significant in the history of our town and we hope that you would, you know.
Don't demolish it.
No.
Continue to preserve this history.
Exactly, something, I'm sure she could word something very nice, but I just thought a, a letter from her would carry more.
That's what Elaine is doing, right?
Right.
Or you.
Yeah.
Read, basically that same approach.
And she was doing it as, no, she was a member of both the commission and the historical society, so she was doing it for both um, entities. Um.
I, I wish the commission had some power there, but we don't.
Yeah.
So, we know that.
And we don't have money to buy the properties and. Once one of us wants to make a box.
And even at that, would you?
Drained out pretty good.
You know, something to present to her.
Okay.
I don't know whether she has any um, letterhead with her name on it.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Uh, yeah. Town historian.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See what happens when you ask a question.
Alright, um, let me talk with, with Myrna, we'll figure something out. Um. We'll go from there.
I mean, I think that's all you can do right now, really.
Wouldn't that, would that go to the realtor or to the homeowner that bought it?
I'd say both.
Both.
I mean, maybe start with the realtor. Or would they consider that this woman's being pushy? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
How people got.
Right. And I knew, I do know the one realtor I talked to, you know, about Water Street. She was very grateful for the information, what she did with that.
Was she just being courteous because she's a realtor and so.
Right.
In mind, she might want your business, or did she really do something?
Or did she do something with it? I don't know. So I guess all you can do is provide information and it is what it is.
Now, would Myrna have the, the history?
Yes, yeah, yeah. What was that, Pat?
Be the boss to water, but.
Uh, yeah.
She made a calendar on Elm Street, some of the historic houses.
Right.
Some of these houses might be part of that.
Right. Alright.
I'll never forget when we moved into Dayton in nineteen ninety-three. We had a welcome wagon. I was thinking about that the other day, what, whatever happened?
Oh, that's long fizzled out and gone.
Oh, what a great.
Hmm, cause I remember eons ago, when I just got out of high school and I worked at the Time Gazette. There was a welcome wagon person that came to the circulation department and she would get say, like a month's subscription to the paper as part of the basket or whatever she was presenting with some of the other local.
Yeah, just.
Businesses.
Way ended up, I, that's the way.
That just all of a sudden fizzled.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, um.
Ouch.
Hmm, Mass History Commons, this revolutionary com- commemoration in your town. This comes through the Mass, Massachusetts Historic History Alliance. Um, I didn't get a chance to see their presentation on Friday, on March tenth. I looked today to see if the recording was there. They're supposed to record it. I just thought it was kind of interesting if we wanted to. Says they're we're kicking into high gears as we're approaching the Revolutionary War's conflicts two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And many communities have a revolutionary history and are interested in talking about it, but not, are not among the icon- iconic sites. So I just thought this was something we should keep in mind.
Hmm.
Um, I'll send the link when they get the, the video up. You know, so that we can all watch it to see if it's something that is going to apply to us. Now, you're involved with a lot of the re-enacting.
There isn't, I mean, there were people in town.
Yeah.
No battles.
There was no battles, but there were people and definitely we have a history, so. Um. Just something to keep thinking about. I didn't realize it was two hundred and fifty years ago.
Twenty twenty-six.
Fine.
Wow.
Time flies, huh? Um, alright, there's no public input tonight, okay. We'll move on to other. Um, this morning I got a letter from William Pruitt, um. He was resigning from the historical commission and the CPC effective immediately. So, um, we need to.
From both groups?
Well, he has to, a CPC, he resigns from automatically because he was our representative. We appointed him to be our representative, so if he's not a member of the um, historical commission, he is not on the CPC. So we have to um, have a, a motion to accept um, Bill's, Williams', our Pruitt's resignation from the historical commission.
Was that kind of sudden?
Yes.
Um, reluctantly. Now I lost my train of thought. I wish he hadn't pulled the trigger quite that quick. What do you do, what do you do to the motion?
Um.
You said, so move.
So move.
Regard them as so move.
Yes, very good. With thanks and appreciation.
With thanks and appreciation.
Exactly. I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Any extensions? That passes unanimously. And I'd like to say thank you to Bill for his time on the commission. The other thing that came through that wasn't on the agenda is the um, conflict of interest law procedures has changed. I sent you the link for the email. So, um, this is brand new. And I thought of something was going on, cause I have a friend over in Robben, she was talking about it and I'm like, oh. It's not that hard, what are you talking about? But it's all changed. She did this new one. She said it was, was a little more difficult than the last time.
And you have to do it online?
Yes.
One hour or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. So when you make a mistake, they're not gonna give you the answer?
My, that's, yeah. Like, what are you talking about? So, um. Oh, going back to Bill's resignation for a moment, that means our position on the CPC is empty right now, so um, we have to think about who we're going to appoint to take the place. And Ken, Ken advised that it's not on the agenda that we do it in April. So, um, we'll do it at our April meeting.
You should let Leanne know that we need another member. Historically.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it two?
Yeah, so we have two positions, um, which really makes sense because until you accept his resignation, it's not official, right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
It's very interesting that I had, uh, thought very strongly about joining CPC and decided the best move was to let, well, as soon as I found out there were other people that were interested, was to let the next generation get involved, because if you, at the meeting yesterday, I looked at them, you know, seventy-five, eighty-two, ninety-four. There were no young people.
Kevin will take objections to that.
Well, that pig and Cibio been probably.
The Indians not.
Lot younger than us. Two young people.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
At large numbers.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's exactly what I also would.
Would you like to reapply as a senior representative?
Well.
Well, hey, well.
Here is that, but anyway.
We have to wait.
I'm available.
Okay, alright, we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Kevin will have a stroke.
Um.
About strokes.
No, no joking, no joking.
Hey, I got this talking too.
Alright, so um, with Bill's resignation, that means we have two open positions on our commission. Is there anything else? No? Okay, our next meeting date is April eleventh at six PM here.
So this is my last meeting with you guys.
Yeah.
Uh. They'll be picking somewhere else, hopefully, from the four selectmen to. Could raise some person for this. This historical commission.
Oh.
Gee, would you like to?
Looking time.
Well, Ken, I would like to thank you for being our liaison. You've been very helpful to us as we've gone through our trials and tribulations as a historical commission. I know for a lot of us, it was, we had growing pains and still are because with the exception of Pat, no one else was really familiar with the commission.
Right, Pat?
Yeah.
It's looking at me like, why is she picking her?
Yeah.
On the commission. That was before you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um. So Ken, thank you for all of your advice and service. Yeah, we appreciate it. And we do expect when you're ready for you to apply for one of those open positions.
And I need.
You need a break, exactly.
Next week.
Yeah.
So.
That's an easy week, so.
Yeah.
Our house to build.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate it.
Yes, I do.
So, we appreciate your assistance, so thank you. Alright. Anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Gonna move.
Sarah, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
We're adjourned.
B C.
You know how proud I am of the both of you when we sit here and you actually do it? Whoa.
Okay.